Welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, July 17th, 2025. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Ms. Hugo, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Hoffman, Ms. Nasar, Mr. Bush, our Planning and Zoning Director, Mr. Smith, and our Planning Consultant, Mr. Amath. All right. First item on our agenda, it always seems out of order to me. Anyways, an opportunity for public comment. If you're here and would like to speak about anything other than the public hearing we're going to have for the special land use for the dealership, now would be the time to...
And the text amendment.
Which text amendment?
C.
Parking.
Oh, the parking. There's some other items we'll have some discussions on. You'll have an opportunity to probably provide some input at that time. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Mike Yantrow Senior, and I want to address a couple of issues, but primarily, I think on your agenda is going to be some discussion about the chicken amendment. And I agree, for the most part, with the proposal that has been made by our planning directors, our consultants. But I think that we want to include a few other items, and that would include a height of the fences around the coop and the fact that we should have the roof, so to speak, of the coop fenced, so that hawks and other animals, birds of prey cannot get into that. And I think that that height ought to be established at about eight feet. I think I really would like to see that we have a permit system, so that people who want to have those chickens either on an every year or every other year have to make applications, so that their neighbors have an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not these ordinances have been adhered to. So I think those are a couple of the things that we need to look at in regard to allowing chickens on residential properties. I think two acres, as I've seen recommended, is without roosters. For four chickens is probably appropriate, and then a scale to allow more chickens as acreage increases. I think that's an appropriate approach to this request from our residents. On the site plan, is the site plan a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I do not have an objection to the zoning for the parcel that's on the agenda tonight. But those are my comments, and I'll speak again on the site plan review.
Appreciate that input, thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Planning Commission? If not, we will close the public comment, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Next item on our agenda is approval of this evening's minutes. Any changes?
Mr. Hoffman?
Sorry, I was reading. No.
Anyone else?
Would recommend approval and of the meeting minutes from June 5th, 2025.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman, support by Mr. Johnson to approve the minutes from the June 5th meeting as presented. Vote would be in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. Approval of this evening's agenda, any changes?
None.
Motion in order.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bush to approve the agenda as presented, support by Ms. Nasar. Another discussion, vote is in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. Correspondents, anybody have anything?
None.
Other than, there's something that was included with the, I guess that's part of Mr. Amath's submittal, the list from Michigan State, I guess. All right, next up would be old business. I don't think we have any this evening. Move this on to new business, which would be special land use 25-001. Special land use for Wiseman Realty for the auto dealership on Holly Road. Want to approach and kind of give us an idea in general what you're doing, because this is going to, what we're going to do is we're going to focus on special land use first, whether it's appropriate for this site or not. And after that, then we'll go into, if it is approved, then we will go on to a formal site plan review. Anyone want to say anything regarding special land use?
Good evening. Chris Enright, representing Contour Land Group, and Randy and Chris Wise. Won't take too much time at this point. I understand that that is, this is just an introduction, and we'll get to the details with the other elements. What you have before you tonight is not too terribly dissimilar to what was presented at the previous meeting regarding the PUD. The site plan is significantly similar to what it was, and our proposal is the same as previous. And so we are here to answer any questions, should they come up through the course of the evening, for the special land use and for the site plan.
That was short. Questions from Planning Commission members?
Give my little spiel, and then we can...
Yeah, we'll have you do that. Was there any questions?
Not yet. Go ahead. Okay. Special land use number 25-001, vacant land on Holly Road. The site is 3.95 acres. Applicant is Wiseman Realty. This is in general commercial zoning now with no PUD. The proposed use is a Hyundai dealership on South Holly Road. New automobile sales are regulated as a special land use and require additional approval beyond the site plan review. No specific site standards are required for new automobile sales, but the following special land use general standards must be met. Special land use will be consistent with the goals, objectives, and future land use map described in the master plan. That item has been met. Special land use will be consistent with the stated intent of the zoning district. That item has been met. And the special land use will be designed, constructed, and operated and maintained to be compatible with and not significantly alter the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. And this item has been met as well. Lastly, the special land use can be served adequately by public facilities, and this item has been met. Planning and zoning department would support recommendation for approval based on the following reasons. Requested special land use is compatible with the surrounding land uses. And two, the requested special land use standards for new automobile sales have been met.
So in, just in general terms, this property is zoned general commercial?
Yes.
But a special land use is required from the township for the use that's being requested?
Yes.
Just to clarify that, what's going on? Questions, comments, anyone? All right. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding this? Well, open this up to the public. About the appropriateness of car dealership and granting a special land use. Yes, sir. Because I don't need to be so formal with you. I don't need to be so formal with you. I know who you are.
I just would like to make sure that the, we don't have any extra or more curb cuts onto Holly Road. Will this zoning and site plan, will that utilize the existing curb cuts?
Yes.
Onto Holly Road?
Yes. Yep, no additional curb cuts there.
And they will also allow the businesses that may or may not occur to the west of those properties, access without any additional curb cuts?
So the two entrances that are north of the creek will be the only two entrances so far. There's no other parcels that are available that would have been utilized as part of the PUD. And the site plan, the updated plan that we gave everybody this morning, or this afternoon, shows the additional access through road to be stubbed in if additional, so that parcel behind this parcel is not landlocked now.
That's my only concern. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address Planning Commission regarding appropriateness of the special land use? We'll close the public comment portion, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Any conditions that anyone can think of that, have any concerns about? Making this too easy for these guys. All right, I guess majority must feel that the special land use is appropriate, so I would entertain a motion regarding the special land use.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Hugo to approve special land use 25-001. Is there support for that?
Support.
I heard Mr. Johnson first. So motion by Ms. Hugo, support by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. Now we get into the fun stuff.
Yeah.
Site plan review. Do you want to go through a little more detail?
Sure.
Comments you might have, Mr. Smith?
So this will be site plan 1184. Again, vacant land, Holly Road, 3.95 acres. Wiseman Realty is zoned commercial. All surrounding properties are commercial, except for across the street is OS, but that's still light commercial. And this is on Holly Road, just south of the Grand Blank City boundary, is the site of the Old Colony Market. Applicant intends to construct a new Hyundai car dealership. The site plan indicates 23,000 square foot for the building, and on 157 parking spaces for new cars on display, employees, and customers. All of the setbacks are in compliance. All the parking setbacks are also in compliance. No additional requirements are warranted for building type or proximity due to general commercial surrounding zoning. The parking requires two and a half spaces for 1,000 square feet of interior sales, plus one and a half spaces for 1,000 square feet of exterior display, plus three spaces for each service bay. 100-plus parking spaces are required, and 150 spaces, including three handicap, have been shown. The Planning Commission has the right to allow for more than 20% over the maximum, but at this time, a plan will need to be, the parking plan will need to be revised, site plan page will need to be revised, to show the correct calculation breakdown. We do know it'll be 100-plus parking spaces required. Exterior lighting, a photometric plan was delivered, and the updated plan, everything is okay. There's zero, zero at all the lot lines, but an updated plan showing the pole details and height will be required. No fencing is required due to surrounding general commercial parcels. Landscaping was provided, and that standard is met for all of the required landscape parking and perimeter parking. Planning and zoning department will recommend a supportive recommendation for preliminary approval, with the understanding that the following items need to be rectified before final approval. Number one, revised plans based on the rowing engineering letter dated July 9th. Number two, revised plans showing a stub road to access the parcel behind this site for future development, which is shown on the page I gave you just before the meeting. So that one's already taken care of. Updated photometric plan, like I stated already, also included on that photometric plan needs to have the average, min, average to minimum ratios corrected per the ordinance. Number five, revised lock coverage to show 75% or below. Number six, existing condition page needs to show zoning, buildings, and street entrances, all of surrounding properties, including across the street. Number seven, revised site plan parking summary to show breakdown of required parking spaces. Number eight, provide details of dumpster enclosure, including caster wheels on the doors. Number nine, note on the site plan page showing that no loading or unloading of vehicles will be allowed along Holly Road, on or along Holly Road. Number 10, the applicant must be approved by all county and state agencies before final site plan can be granted. Number 11, I've added two after talking with Mr. Bush, a loading zone needs to be shown on the site plan, and then showing turning radiuses to allow for delivery and car trailers throughout the site.
I guess I wanted to reinforce on the list that Mr. Smith has, that the photometric ratios, it's not just a simple thing of changing the plan, it's going to affect your lighting uniformity layout. It's, I know we have a tough standard here, but it's so that we don't have, you know, dealerships tend to have a real bright spot here, and then not so bright in other portions. So that's one you probably have to spend some time on. That was truck turning radiuses that you were talking about, is number 12, right?
Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate on the turning radiuses, I spoke to Fire Marshal Keller, and he had no, he must have done his own drawings and his own measurements, because he had no comments on any of the radiuses for their fire...
But we're asking for them to be shown on the...
Yes, correct. It's just to show on the page, but we have no issues from the fire department.
Okay. Well, I didn't have 12 items, but I do have a few items, unless anybody else got something they wanted to go through first.
I have a question from Mr. Smith. It's on the number of handicap parking spaces. Information here says there's 157 parking spaces with only three handicap. Could you double check? It just seems low to me.
That will be, it should be probably at least six, by my calculations. But I won't know the exact number required until I get the exact breakdown of what is going to be required, because we may require, there might be a spot where it might be five and maybe six, but it's going to be closer to six.
Yeah, that's...
But I will make sure, yes.
Yeah, because my sense was that it probably should be about double that amount. Okay.
All right, I've got some nitpicky things that I noticed on the plan. At least when I was looking at a drawing, C100, the concrete removal symbol on the legend doesn't match the symbol that was used on the plan, so correct one or the other. Minor little verbiage regarding the telecommunication and cable lines, they should be noted to be removed. The way the notes written wasn't super clear, so again, another small item.
What page is that?
That's all on C100. On C200, there's some items regarding signage. Just want to make it clear that signage is under separate review and permit. That's part of the record. And I don't know if you had this one covered, Mr. Smith. I went through and did my review, and then took off anything I saw, but I think the landscape materials on the plan need to correspond with the plant list, so be, and part of that is to be identified on there, because I think it's blank now on the actual schedule that we had to review anyway. So part of that is filling in the table that shows the calculations. I didn't see those for the landscape plan. The other thing I'd like to see is, I know that our ordinance requires, you know, certain number of trees along the frontage. You might want to consider some evergreen trees, like to the, way is north, like southeast corner to the site, maybe replace some evergreen, put some evergreens in there instead of canopy trees. Just like to mix it up a little bit, and then possibly along the credit union to provide a little screenage. And there's a note, I think, on the plan that talks about screenage trees or something, that wasn't real clear on what you were doing there. And the deciduous trees, I know you've got a long, seems to be a pretty good mix on the schedule. We want to make sure that we get that mixture on the site, so that, you know, if there's some sort of disease that attacks a certain type of tree, that we don't lose all the trees. That's something you're probably planting anyway, but without seeing the numbers, it's hard to tell. Do we have our own planting detail? Because I remember seeing the same detail for the trees, where it shows the staking method. I thought we did, just... Anyway, follow up on that. I didn't see, you know, you usually have like a little piece of hose, and it's tied off to some stakes. I didn't see that on the plans. There's a note on the, one of the trees that talks about a six-foot clearance, like to the first set of branches at Parkway. Is this whole site a Parkway, or just if you can clarify where you're planning to trim Let's see, my item five is provide, I think it'd be beneficial to have a north arrow on the site lighting plan, just because that one is rotated. Any plans that are rotated from what the other plans are? It takes you a little bit longer to kind of look at and figure out which way north And on that lighting plan, there appears, if you've got that with you, there appears to be another line that's parallel to the back of the building, that's running through the building. I didn't know what that was. I only saw it on the site lighting plan. It might have just been copied.
A line, you said?
Yeah, there was a line on the plan that I had, that followed, that seemed to be exactly parallel, almost as if the building was a smaller size, and then it was expanded. Just get that corrected or clarify what it is. For final site plan, I'd like to see some information on the ACM SKY material, particularly regarding any light reflectance values of that, how shiny it is, I guess would be a good way of putting it. And then on the reflected ceiling plan, I think this was, I believe was A102, there's a note that says optional soft light. You can confirm if those lights are part of this project, and if they were included in the site lighting calculations. And then I didn't see a seal, I saw a seal of the architect kind of on the cover sheet. Is there a, can we get the site plan sealed for final? That's the extent of my list. So I've got seven items. We'll get you a copy of this, go in addition to the 12 items that Mr. Smith has. Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman?
So I know that the paper that was sent out now with the new stub on the north side, it, on that side of the building, looks like it's where the service areas are also. Is that going to be clean enough to understand later, when there's somebody behind there, that that's basically a street, where parking's not going to be there, you know, somebody's pulled up and, you know, hey, your car's ready, but it's right outside the door there type of area? It just seems like it's the side of the building. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just so you're aware, there, they have one on the north side, also Merrill Lynch has one on their side as well, on their own dedicated site. So there is going to be two ways to get behind into that rear parcel.
I do see the one where, you know, between Merrill Lynch and this, the issue is, is, I mean, if you're going to have pay to put a stub in there, I mean, is it even worth putting the stub in there if this is something that's not going to be used or worked, or...
We have to do that so that that parcel isn't landlocked back there.
I, well, again, if it's going to be there and we have to have it, is it going to be clear enough that this is a street, and it's not going to be overrun with extra, you know, things being parked out there? And it just seems like it's the side of the building where, it wouldn't be something where I would naturally say, oh, this is where I need to go back here. The other site is very clear. There's, there's kind of billiards on each side where you're kind of driving through. You can tell it's a street to go back there.
The area you're talking about is next to the credit union?
Yeah. I mean, this doesn't look like a path to get back...
This is where you bring your car in, and then it gets taken, moved someplace else for service, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's the, yeah, the customer service area. You drive in there, and that's, that's the right up area, the right up lane, and then you exit out of there with, you know, you follow the arrows. And so that whole area, you, there's no place to, I mean, there's a space there, but you can't park there, because it'd be blocking vehicles getting out of the, out of the right up lane, so...
Want to just add some no parking signs along that side?
I just, well, even with the, you know, how you go in and then you go out, well, those cars are probably going to be making a right. It just, yeah, it just doesn't seem like there's, it's a road, or, I think it'd be confusing for people who are needing to go through your property. Seems like it's a traffic pinch point with cars going in and out, and an easy spot to say, here, pick up your car, it's right out there. I mean, when there's nobody behind there, it's very easy for you to use. It's no big deal. You won't have to be fighting the traffic that could be going in and out of that back area.
But it's potentially conflict.
Right. I just...
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate a little bit more on what you're saying. You have a driveway going into the site, and I think if we're going to dedicate a portion of this site for access to the rear site, I think we have to have a dedicated easement that allows access to the rear site, that I don't see. Also, just a thought, it looks to me like if it's going to be a drive that goes from Holly Road to the back, it looks like it gets smaller at the building. It looks like the driveway throat might be 35, 40 feet, and it looks like you're pinching down to about 28 at the building location. So just a thought, I don't know if that's an issue, but I definitely think we need an easement back there to dedicate that as an access easement for the rear.
See what he's talking about?
My understanding is the easement is, there is an easement there. There's an access, there's supposed to be an access easement. Looking at the survey, and I don't see it here, but I know there's a dedicated, there's a dedicated area to get to that back for that access drive. I mean, that's why, that's why the building is located where it is exactly, because it's, there is actually an easement line that I don't see here, but I know it exists. I think there's an exception, actually, if you see it, 1920, on the survey sheet 1 of Declaration of Ingress Egress Easement, flat on survey. So there is an easement, an access easement there currently. It does not go all the way to the back of the property, but that can be extended back.
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, what I'll call the Merrill Lynch drive-through, is that, can that not be the one, or do we have to have two, or each property has to have one connecting to the back?
We wanted to make sure each property had one going forward, just to make sure in case, because that's a large parcel back there, in case that ever got subdivided, that there wasn't, since there's no more driveways going to be allowed on Holly Road, we wanted to be able to make sure that both of them had... to be able to make sure that both of them had, they're already existing, they're already there. We just want to make sure that there's a stub, just like is on Merrill Lynch, we have one on this property as well.
It just looks like a conflict area, serving two things.
I think, just to clarify, I think what you're saying is somebody comes in, drops their car off, a service person takes it, they're going to have to basically take a right-hand turn out into that, let's call it a street, to go back behind the building. Just seems like an opportunity for some collisions. I don't know what the answer is, whether it's signage or just take a look at that.
I mean, obviously we have no issue with signage or pavement markings or something to that effect. The, the way it actually functions is in the, in the right up lane, the vehicles will come in and we've all been to dealerships or dropped your car off for service, that the vehicles are then driven out if you are getting your car serviced and they make a left-hand turn going into the building. So truck, cars being dropped off specifically.
So they're going into the building directly, not having to go, okay.
Correct. Actually, that area straight ahead is the, the wash area. So then vehicles, if it's, or the cars go straight into the wash bay. So the preponderance of all the vehicles are either, are going into either the wash bays or they're turning south left into the building for service. So it's not terribly typical to drop your car off for service and drive, drive it out in the same transaction.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to go a little bit farther on the easement, as they said, a sheet one of five shows a easement about three quarters of the way back, which they said they could extend for us. But my question is, it says a 43-foot easement. And I don't know, Mr. Smith, if you can answer this or if it's an attorney question. Building setback is 39, so that's, the building would be four foot into the easement and I don't think that's allowed and I don't know for sure. That would be something I'd have to look up myself. But I'm pretty sure you can't build an easement.
Well, we have, because it's an access easement, not a dedicated easement. So in my opinion, I don't think that's a problem, but we can clarify that.
I, I don't know if it works for commercial or residential, but I know we owned some property before with an easement and we couldn't build anything on it. And it was an access easement. So just a question.
All right. I've added an item to my list, provide access easement extension in north, verify width. Anyone else? Mr. Bush?
One more item, since you were saying your items were a little nitpicky. Both cover sheets under the fire department show Robert Burdette as a fire chief. He is not the fire chief in Grand Lake Township, it's Jamie Jent. So if we could have that corrected.
Note it. I think he was here when he was made, I think he was here when he was made chief, if I wasn't mistaken, last time, that's a couple of months, right?
It's been a bit.
That was on the cover sheet?
On both cover sheets.
If we're nitpicking, that's a good thing, right? The big stuff is taken care of. Anyone else? Any, this, is, there really isn't a public hearing for the site plan, but if anyone in the attendance has any comments, we'll allow that as well. Anyone in the public want to comment on, if you've seen the site plan or? I would.
I do have one item to bring up for discussion. So in the, the document that we dropped off after a conversation that I had with Jeremy about extending the drive to the back of the property, which is what the sketch shows, it was the main purpose for the, the drawing to indicate that we're going to comply with that. And also regarding the fire department access and delivery access, turning radii, et cetera, et cetera. So the, that was the reason for reasoning behind having the access point that we're proposing on the southwest side of the property. That way, fire trucks, it's the easiest way for fire trucks to exit the property without having to navigate their way through and thread their way through the, the, the parking areas. In doing so, originally we had, around our original proposal that we submitted, we had another access point to the southeast, which ended up, you drive in from Merrill Lynch and you end up in a bank of parking spaces. That access is already there, it just, it happened to be there. Currently, there is no access easement to the Merrill Lynch property. It's recorded. We are getting that signed by owner currently so that there is in fact official access to that property. And if it hasn't been signed, it will be signed within a day or so before closing. So it was our desire to eliminate that access point because it didn't really provide much value. Our thought was is that the cross-access into the properties, that if you're in Merrill Lynch, you're going to use the Merrill Lynch driveway. If you're in the credit union, you're going to use the credit union driveway. So in our minds, our argument was it didn't provide a whole, great deal of access benefit at that location. There is access in the southwest, we're proposing it, but it's not needed from our perspective to the southeast. So we were looking to eliminate that along with making the other improvements of the conditions of the site plan.
And that's the one that's labeled as no vehicular connection here?
Correct. That's just a note, a sketch note on.
Mr. Smith?
Just to piggyback off what, what he's saying is that, and that'll also help with his lot coverage calculation as well.
More green space, less asphalt.
I'm glad to see you have a new parking stall size on here.
Yes. 10 by 20.
Your gigantic parking spaces?
Not when you're trying to park a full-size truck. Yeah, that's, that's tight. Anyway, Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess just to piggyback more on, on the turning radius and, and the site access, it looks to me like we're going to access the site with semi trucks or deliveries, you might say, on the northeast side. Where would that truck staged to unload vehicles?
It will likely, in the back of the building, likely.
So I was, my point is you can't block the easement with a truck, where, even for an hour.
In the back of the building.
If you, and that's exactly why we need the turning radius, to make sure semi can get there and get out. As they just pointed out, when you turn into the, the driveway that they're going to remove, semi can't get in that because there's parking there. They're going to remove it, so that's fine. And it looks like there is access from Holly Road to the back and out. I just need to see those radius.
We, we've done the studies, they, they should have been in the drawings. So, but we, we had to make sure that the car hauler, the full-size fire truck, the engine, et cetera, that can do it and we have that, we're happy to show it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. One more thing too, before we make a decision, I'd like to get your take on it with, I know there's a lot of little things that need to be done. If you're comfortable, if the board's comfortable allowing me to do the final, make that as another one of the stipulations.
Honestly, on this one, not because of the extent of the list, which is a lot of little stuff. Just normally when we go through site plan review, we sit down and we kind of go through things and we talk back and forth and come up with some ideas. I just want to make sure, I would like to do that since we didn't have that opportunity.
The only reason why was because of the special land use.
Well, I understand that.
Yep, yep. But we can, instead of me doing the final, we can have the site plan review committee do it.
That's what I think would be.
That's fine.
Just to go through and make sure that you understand if you had any questions about what our comments were and said, here's what our solution is. And oh, what if we did this instead? Just so we all get a plan that everybody's happy with, I think is.
Right. So what our plan would be is to incorporate all the, the conditions as well as some of the other elements that we discussed here, revise the plans, send them back into Jeremy for discussion, however you want to do that with a committee or ad hoc or whatnot. We recognize the back and forth and needing for the dialogue and communication.
No, it's, I think it's a good thing that we do here at the township and it's part of the process that I enjoy anyway, so I'd like to do that for the final.
That's fine, not a problem.
And a final site plan, I believe, could be granted with the conditions of the township, not township, county approvals, right?
Right. So we won't go, we won't request final site plan until we get all the county approvals.
What I guess I'm saying is.
So the normal course of action is we do tonight or we do site plan review, they have their list of corrections, then they can submit to all the county agencies and then I either or the site plan review committee does the final once all of the county approvals are done. So there won't be really any back and forth, that's why I was asking, because we've done, we've already done kind of the back and forth. I know the list is long, but it's, it's my, a lot of minor things. So it, it's on the board's decision to say if you, typically you guys give me the authority to grant the final site plan approval, but I understand with the amount of corrections on this one, why we can do that. But again, it'll be, they'll give me more plans and we'll just go through the list and make sure they're all corrected and we can do that at site plan review, but there won't be really any more back and forth at that point.
You never know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Jeremy, let's throw a what-if scenario. They can't build an easement. That changes the site plan. Do we want to have them go through all the agency approvals before they come to site plan review and then be denied because they can't build and they have to redo the whole site?
So then, again, because we already did the site, the special land use tonight, we can do, the site plan review can do any updated site plans. So we can, we'll have to get that answer as soon as possible.
It should be, should be.
Could the site?
Get that answer with input from whether it's our attorney or whoever before they, that should happen pretty.
Wouldn't the site plan have to go back to the agencies if it changed?
Yes. Oh, yeah, for sure.
So why go through the whole process if we don't, twice?
That's on the applicant's decision because going through county agencies takes months sometimes. So if they want to do that and start it, at least get in the hopper, then they can.
I'm not saying that's going to happen.
No, no, no.
I don't know. Just throwing it out there.
They're, they're aware of what happened, that Toyota had delays and delays and delays and it wasn't. It takes a minute. So getting in the hopper and then amending is, in my opinion, quicker than trying to wait and then start from the beginning fresh.
So we have 12 items from Mr. Smith. I've captured nine items. We'll provide you a copy of that list as well before you leave.
I've got chicken scratch, but we'll, we'll get him an official copy.
We haven't gotten to the chicken stuff yet.
Yeah, right. We'll get him an official letter from myself early next week with hopefully already having that, the easement question.
Include those in.
Yep.
All right. Any else? So with us doing the site plan review here at the full planning commission, is there actually a motion that has to be made?
Yep.
Anyone like to make a motion, Mr. Bush?
So moved.
Ms. Nasser made a motion to approve the site plan, I guess, with 12 items from Mr. Smith and the nine that I've got. Is there support for that?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Preliminary site plan, right?
Yes. Yes, this is for preliminary site plan approval. Final site plan to go to site plan review committee. Discussion, if not, a vote is in order. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Next item is a text amendment, motor vehicle parking. Just to clarify for me, because my memory isn't as good as it used to be, is this acted on here or does it have to go to the township board?
This, you make a recommendation to the township board.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Evening, commission. I can go ahead and describe the memo real quick. So you had a lot of good discussion on this last meeting regarding the allowable areas to basically put a driveway. Pretty much the only thing we changed though was that, that pretty key change about allowing parking on a paved driveway in a non-required rear yard only when directly leading to an accessory structure of greater than 200 square feet. I know you had concerns about just creating a driveway that meanders to nothing. This way, we have it where it's on the driveway leading to a garage per se. We also landed on, similarly, we landed on the minor change to allow the parking on a gravel or stone-based surface only in the non-required rear yards or non-required side yards, only when directly leading to that similarly sized 200 square foot or greater structure.
Other than the stone, would be in a temporary situation.
Correct. It could be for, I believe, up to a year. Or it could be if your road is a, is a gravel or dirt road as well. So I guess any questions about the changes that were made? We updated the graphic accordingly to kind of tell you what's going on.
So this is a recommendation for amendment to section 4.5 of the ordinance, correct?
Yep. You'll make a recommendation to the township board.
4.5-0, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
You'll need to open the public hearing.
Ms. Coulter?
A question or maybe just a comment on the provision about a maximum of four consecutive hours in maintenance procedures. It seems to me that that's almost impossible to, you know, oversee. I know when we were having issues about parking RVs in the driveway, you know, we pointed out that, you know, how do you know when the period starts and when, when it ends, you know? So I would, I don't have any problem with a maximum of five days during any single month, but it just seems to me that it's really going to be almost impossible to enforce the four consecutive hours. And I don't think, if you took it out, I don't think it's going to, you know, make that much difference.
If I may, we did, that's a good thing to point out because actually we did change that in this small little time from last meeting to now, the five to two. I think Jeremy and I agreed that actually slimming it down makes it easier to enforce because it's a little bit more narrow now than five days. I think enforcement officer, five days is a long time to check up on, but two days is a lot easier.
Seeing as that's how they get two violation notices before we can give them a civil infraction ticket, we feel two days is sufficient for working. Now, that's just in the driveway or in the, if you're in the, if you're in a building, in your garage or pole line, that, we have no issue with that. We just don't want it to be unsightly in the driveway. We've had multiple issues most recently where that's been an issue in residential yet.
Yeah. I mean, my concern was more that it just doesn't seem to be enforceable. I mean, I think we need something to, you know, regulate the length of time that you can have your vehicle on the driveway being worked on, but.
It's going to be most likely complaint based, I would guess.
It is complaint based. It gives us, the change gives us quicker timeline to turn it around, the four hours, I agree, but that's been original and that's been in the ordinance since at least 2008. So the four hours is really not as concerning as the days and that's why we shortened it from five to two so we can, if they are thumbing their nose at us, that we can get this in process quicker.
Ms. Nasser, did you have something?
I was just going to say, I lived in a condo association and I guarantee you everyone that lived in there was calling the township to complain about the RVs when they were there for more than three, we had a three-day rule and they did complain all the time.
Yep. And that change has really helped my code enforcement guys look at the more broader picture of light and grass and things of that sort that are more eyesores than a, an RV in somebody's driveway. Well, I understand that they're getting bigger and longer, I understand that, and taller, but. Well, I understand that they're getting bigger and longer, I understand that, and taller, but they're there for the season, you can only park them in the driveway, and then after the season's over, you gotta put them away in the side yard, backyard, or off-site, so that's, they've been able to focus on other things, where a blighted car, jack stands poses a more health and safety issue as well, so having it up in the air for five days is not okay, in my opinion.
We're, we're scheduled to have a public hearing, so we'll go to the public on this one? Anyone like to address?
I'm very confused about this, because what was published in the paper isn't what he said, and then she brought up issues that he did not even mention, so.
I think it would be better if, like, when there are gonna be these text amendments, if we knew what they really were, because my impression, and a bunch of my neighbors, when we read the announcement in the paper, was that you were gonna stop allowing RVs and other motorized vehicles to be parked on grass, and a lot of us, we don't even have an RV yet, but our kids are telling us we have to get one. And so like our neighbors, they park theirs on the grass on the side during the summer, and then in the winter, park it in the back, you know, and they do the appropriate blocking and all sorts of things, and we think that's fine, and it's great, and we're like, yeah, that's what we'd like to do when we have one. But then when he said what the amendment, the text change was, I was like, well, that's not why we're here, that's not why we just sat here and waited for 50 minutes, and then she brought up things, and I thought, well, that's not even what he said it was about, and then four hours about something, and then a change from five days to two days, I'm like, so what is the amendment change? I'm curious.
I think there's, there's two different things.
Yeah, there is, there's two, there's a lot of talk going on, we've already addressed, because those, the RVs are considered recreational vehicles, not motor vehicles.
Okay.
So this is just for cars. We've already addressed the recreational vehicles that say you can't park it in the grass in the front yard, you can have it in the front driveway from April 1st to November 1st, and then after that, has to be on the side yard or the backyard or off-site.
Right.
So RVs have already been addressed, this today is only for motor vehicles.
It said something about you can't even use gravel as your substrate or something.
That, no, that's, that's, this is for mo, this is for motor vehicles.
That's what the paper says.
I don't think the paper referred to RVs.
It did not refer.
No, it didn't revert, it just said motorized vehicles.
Motorized, which are cars.
So if you've got a motorized RV.
Still considered, still considered a recreational vehicle.
Okay, okay, what about a boat?
Recreational vehicle.
Okay, what about a side-by-side?
Recreational.
Okay, okay, but those are all the things I'm concerned.
Those are very good questions.
Very good questions, yes.
You're getting very technical and very ethical.
The definitions, and we've, and we've addressed all that.
But then again, also, it seems like most of these complaints are, still, I come from, I, I would like less regulations, not more, and it seems like most of these things, most of these complaints tend to come from a few people in a few areas. Can't they be addressed better by HOAs in their individual subdivisions, instead of trying to pull all of us into it?
Well, we're looking for uniformity across the townships.
Why? I don't want the same things as the people in the million-dollar homes want.
And that's, Mr. Chairman, let me address that a little bit, they're HOAs, if they're more, they need to be more strict than ours, and it's on them, if they want stricter rules, to be strict, and then they have to enforce it. I can only enforce what's in my book, so.
Right, so, right, so I'm, you know, I, I'm just wondering where these, you know, sometimes I wonder where some of these, even, I've been to a couple, not a lot of meetings, but a couple, and I just wonder sometimes where some of these rule changes even come from?
They're usually...
Code enforcement. Code enforcement's on a dated...
But why, is it just because one or two people have complained really loudly?
There's 40,000 people in the township, it's not one or two people, let me tell you. I've got RV complaints, I can show you how many I had last year.
Well, I mean, it's for everything, like, you know, when you decide to change the size of the parking spaces, and, you know, things like that, like, why? Why was that necessary?
The issue keeps coming up over and over.
Okay.
It's like, okay, we need to address it somehow in the ordinance, that's where it comes from.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Because I know, you know, like...
I'm sorry, let me do one thing real quick, you, you mentioned about million-dollar home people wanting different things than other people. I will tell you, the complaints that I've heard about RVs are in subdivisions where somebody's driving in, and they got five of these things parked, you know, two, 20 feet away from each other, so it's not subject to a price range.
No, I get it.
Well, I'm, you, you ask.
Yes, right, yeah.
So it's, it's not a price.
You're seeing it everywhere.
We have many complaints.
Okay.
We have an opportunity for somebody to come in and get an ordinance.
Variance.
Variance, and so when we see these things coming up as constant problems, that's when we make a change.
Okay.
We don't do it because we're looking for a job.
Trust me, this, these processes are, this is not a...
Very tedious.
It is very tedious, and it, and it takes multiple meetings and multiple boards in order to get things, things passed.
Like, I'm glad to see, like, we're getting a car dealership in Grand Blank, I'm like, oh, money.
Right, exactly, so it's not, it's not all for naught, it's not something we're just pulling out a rabbit out of our hat, there's, there's reasons why we're doing all these amendments, yeah.
Okay, just...
And sorry about the confusion between the RV thing, and this is addressing a separate issue where cars are being repaired and sitting there for a long time.
And they're turning it into a junkyard, and I get it, okay, okay, all right, well, I'm...
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So we will be getting an RV then and making all of the grandkids happy.
There you go.
There you go. Anyone else who would like to address the planning commission on this item? Not, we will close the public hearing, bring it back up to the planning commission. So zoning case 674, text amendment, a recommendation to approve to the township board as presented?
674-Q.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman, support by Mr. Bush, any other discussion? If not, a vote is in order, are all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Next item is some additional text amendment discussions.
Yeah, so these are discussions, these next two are discussions, they are not public hearings, these are the first you'll be hearing for both of these memos here. Sure? Let's start with chickens.
Yeah. All right, so obviously, as we pointed out in the memo, and I think you're all aware of, I'm less aware of this as the consultant, obviously, but there's been a lot of, what I, what I understand is that there's been a lot of feedback that the planning commission and township board has received in encouraging chicken keeping in residential areas, you know, as accessory use to residential areas. So I helped, at least drafted an initial memo to get you started, get you thinking about chicken keeping in your community, so we gave you some examples here. We gave you some broad-ranging municipalities that kind of range in size, and kind of urban, suburban, rural nature, to kind of give you a good menu of what's going on in other communities. So we talked, we brought up Springfield Township, which is just, you know, what, I think, two townships south of you here. We brought up a couple in Wash, Washaw County, Dexter Township, and Scioto Township. Scioto Township, I would say, is relatively similar to Grand Blank in terms of its kind of suburban nature. And then we brought up two cities, one, City of Southfield, which is kind of more of a suburb, but a city in itself, and City of Ypsilanti, which is more urbanized, probably the most urban area of any of these. And, you know, there's some varying ways these communities regulate. The cities seem to regulate by general code two and with a permit process, whereas the townships, you know, more regulate just in zoning. We gave a sample amendment at the end of the memo. I think, really, from our conversations, Jeremy and I, you know, we're kind of starting, in a way, a little bit conservative or cautious in its, in the size, minimum lot size and whatnot requirements, in that we're kind of starting at two acres. That essentially precludes it from going in a, in a lot of subdivisions, and we have a sliding scale at that where you can keep four for the first two acres. Really what that means is that you can keep four from two to 2.99 acres. Once you get to three, and every whole acre above, you're permitted to keep an additional chicken, in that we prohibit hens, or roosters.
So, could I save my questions?
Go ahead, yeah, I was, I was pretty much done.
I just want to mention that if we keep this at two acres, we can have four chickens. And for each additional acre, we can have one more.
Yep.
So they can have a total of 10. If, if they have 10 acres, and it's just rural, and it's not a farm, they're allowed 10. A farm can have as many as they want. A farm is 10 acres. So I think we're gonna have issue there. One, I think, looking at Ypsilanti, they have any restrictions, Southfield has no restrictions. If we say two acres, why are we doing this? 98% of the township aren't allowed chickens at that point, if we say two acres. Just a thought.
Yes, I'll, I'll make a comment, I'm, I'm in support of the two acres, because I don't believe we should be putting these, allowing chickens where you're congested close together. I also think we should have, as some of these townships or cities have, is a minimum distance to a property line and adjacent.
And that, that's, that's in there.
Absolutely.
Those are good things.
They are, they're in there, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Just, by the way, I looked up what City of Flint was, and it's three acres. I don't know how they come across three, but, you know, so it's, we're in the same range anywhere, anyway.
I think this is, to Mr. Bush's comment, this is, 10 acres was a bit egregious, and I've said that from the beginning when I first got here, and Superintendent Lemina asked me to go through the book and see anything that was out of, out of whack, and that was one that I always thought that was kind of odd. So this is our compromise. The township board, from what I've heard, most are not wanting it in subdivisions, and I think that's, my opinion is, I moved into a subdivision, I moved into residential, I didn't move in next to a farm. You move in next to a farm, you understand what you're getting yourself into, so why would we allow a farm to come into a subdivision? That's just my two cents, that's, you have your own opinions, but, so we have what we have, Andy and myself have kind of gone through this to give us a starting point. This is, this is just a starting point, if we want to see three acres, we could do three acres. If we want to see five, that's great, it's all...
I'm okay with, personally, I'm okay with two.
Right.
We got a couple of additional questions, we heard some input this evening about height of fencing.
Six feet in residential is the maximum.
I was gonna say, I think that's a max that we can do, isn't it?
Yep.
I guess if you don't cover...
You could have a variance, but that's, again, that's, now we're doing, that gets out of hand real quick, so that's, I mean, it's not that they can't go for variance, it just, it, fence topper, makes sense to me, at six feet, you could do that, that's fine, but...
That, that makes some sense, but I know a family member that has chickens, and they do, but they did put fencing over the top. What's the difference between the building, because a lot of times they get the chicken coop that they're locked up into at night, and they're allowed to go out, run around more outside during the day, in that area's fence, but is it our job to, I don't know?
Yes, so in my opinion, we're gonna treat the coop like an accessory structure. So we've got a, under two acres, you have a mean height, maximum 14 feet, and you have setbacks, but obviously, that's different, because this in here is giving other setback requirements, but at least it gives me a, and a, we can permit that, because we don't want to see two outbuildings plus a coop, plus, plus, I mean, we just don't, that's gonna get out of hand real quick, so that, that coop's gonna count as an accessory structure.
I saw Mr. Hoffman's hand first.
Clarification for me, when I think of fence heights, I think of on the property line of being six feet, so if I'm 100 feet off my property line and I have a fenced-in area in there, I'm still beholding to six feet?
As it states today, yes.
Oh, interesting.
Mr. Bush?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Smith. A two-acre lot in Grand Blank Township, how many accessory structures are allowed?
Two, under two acres, two.
Okay, so they are allowed two, so if they have a pole, a barn, they, it still doesn't preclude them from having.
Detached structures, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So if they had a shed in a barn, they couldn't have a coop?
Correct, you'd have to, you'd have to pick one, or you'd have to convert one into the coop.
That's fine.
Yep, and have, have the run attached to it.
So you could attach the coop to the barn, or to the...
If this, well, and that's why we want it permitted, because we want to make sure that the square footage doesn't get out of whack as well.
Right.
So that's, again, that falls on me and my department to make sure that that's reviewed, to make sure that square footage requirements aren't exceeded.
Because Mr. Bush made a comment about the number, I think the starting point of four is fine, I saw something about four to six, but it does seem like you should be allowed to go up a little quicker than, in my opinion, one every, that one every acre? Just my, my thoughts. Mr. Bush?
Just to go farther than that, my, my son has chickens, he's in Lansing. He, they're allowed, like, I don't know, six, he has, like, 30, and he's got 10 roosters. They love them, the kids love them, everybody loves them. Four chickens probably aren't gonna lay enough eggs if people eat eggs. My, my son's family goes through a ton, just them, and they take them to church and give them, give them away too, but four chickens isn't even gonna feed a family of four. Again, I think it's great that we're doing this in a, in a starting point, but I think there's other factors involved, if somebody wants chickens, they want to feed their family. Four chickens aren't gonna do that.
Ms. Nasser?
Do we know how many, I have no idea, so how, how many, on average, how many?
Depends how they feel that day.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, can I ask the audience? Can we ask the audience?
Absolutely.
What, per, per chicken?
Okay. Less, less than one a day, yeah.
I'm talking about less than one, one a day.
So I say that, because my, my son's family eats them every day.
Depends on the age of the chick.
Yep, the older they get, the less, right?
They're usually smaller, eggs, they're not the size you get at the store, so if you're eating an egg at the store, you're gonna eat two or three at home.
Depends on the breed.
Yet, you're correct. My sons are smaller, so.
We can what-if this to death, I mean, I, we're, we're trying to compromise without getting out of hand, is my, 80, 70, I'd say 65 to 75% of the township is a bedroom community, and won't qualify for this.
Correct.
As it's, as it's memoed today. So is there gonna be issues? Yes, code enforcement's gonna have issues regulating this until we get it, everybody understands what's going on, not a problem, we'll handle it, it's not a big deal, but is this gonna fix everybody's problem? No, but it's, it's a compromise better than what we had, so, I mean, we can always address it later down the road, just like we've done for the RVs, we've done for...
My opinion, let's get a little closer, maybe we bump to four, up to six, and then for each acre, you get another, I don't know, whatever it is.
Don't do halves, please, for the love of God, don't do halves, make it, make it whole numbers, please. We're gonna go up, don't go up by 1.5, let's make it one, two, four, whatever, whatever it is, just don't make it in halves, please, that's all I request.
For every acre, permit two more. I was just trying to figure out how you can build a 5,000-square-foot concrete.
That would give them, right, that would give them 16, right?
Say that again?
If they had 10 acres, that would give them 16, but I think that's gonna be an issue once they get to 10 acres.
At 10 acres, though, I mean, you've got a lot of spread in 10 acres.
Right, but technically, they could have as many as they want at 10 acres.
No, you have to be, you have to be approved as a farm to have that, you can't just automatically assume to be a farm, no. You are a residential house, and you're permitted as a single-family residential.
How does that work?
You come in for site plan, like everybody else does. You want, if you want to be a farm, you gotta be a farm.
So if we start at six, and you bump up to additional per each acre, they get you...
20.
Yeah, somewhere in that range.
We can put a cap on it as well, we can say, here's your calculation, and then no matter how much acreage you have, you're capped at 20.
Yes, I agree with that.
Whatever, whatever number we come up with.
And it's only gonna be if there's complaints.
Say that again?
I said, again, it's only gonna be an issue if there are complaints.
Right.
Oh yeah, for sure, yeah.
Anyway, that's my, my, I would propose, normally I don't propose things here, but I see...
I mean, I guess...
I see our experts get...
With a little bit more...
I was gonna say, we can...
Mr. Chairman, I just have a suggestion too, I think this may be controversial among the, you know, people in the township, I would suggest we reach out to some of the homeowners associations and let them know that we're reviewing this.
No, we don't deal with homeowners associations.
They have their own rules.
They have their own rules, we don't dictate what the homeowners association...
No, no, I'm just saying to let them know that we are considering this ordinance, because I think there's gonna be a lot of...
We don't, I don't have contact for any, I don't know the subdivisions that have homeowners associations, I don't have contact names, I don't know any of that, to where we would contact them, and if this... to where we would contact them, and if this is the way it is.
Someone-
Ninety-five percent, say that again?
Does there have to be any notice for?
It texted, an ordinance change, yeah, we, it goes in the paper.
It'll be noticed in the paper.
It'd be in the paper, like, they'll-
And most home associations won't qualify for this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he just said that ninety percent of the houses aren't even at two acres in, in the, in the township, so this is really for people that live off the, like, off the road, not in a sub, because I don't, any subs that have two acres for their houses. It's not normal. Not usually, anyway.
So there are, there's, it's a subdivision-like setting, but it's a rural subdivision setting in the southwest. I think it's Toshia and Tabitha Lane down in the southwest corner town. They're bigger parcels. They would qualify for this. They're not technically, they're still acreage parcels, and they're not in a typical subdivision where you've got a hundred parcels.
Psych condos.
They're not, they're not even that. They're just larger tracts of lands that have more parcels in it than being on a main road, but less than what you have in a typical subdivision setting.
I would also go on to say that most of those subdivisions, I'll just throw it out there, have homeowners associations that aren't gonna allow this. Again, this ordinance is, is not allowing for chickens at all. If we do the math and say the what-ifs, you're, those, those homeowners associations are not gonna allow chickens.
And that's why-
So those are the ones we're saying can have chickens. So, like I said, what are we doing here?
I, we're making it better than what it is today. We're compromising. That's, that's all it is.
I'll accept that.
We've, we've, we've been tasked by the Township Board to research this, and this is where we've landed today. Again, it's, everything can be changed. We can run with this for a year and see where we go, two years, and then if we see changes, just like we did with the RV ordinance, this, the motor vehicle ordinance, I mean, we've done changes and then we've done it.
Right. So would you want a public hearing set for next month?
I would appreciate a public hearing set for next month, yes. With some revisions, with-
Yeah, it sounds like you want to start with a little bit more chickens, and then you also want to ramp up at maybe a slightly-
Start at six, and then every acre you get a two with a cap at twenty.
Four. Let's double what your number was. You said, well, there was four, right?
There's four.
So start at four, let's start at six, and then every acre you get two with a cap at twenty.
Not that I'm ever gonna have chickens, but yeah. It's too much work to even handle dogs.
Not in ten acres.
You got some input from us, you're gonna make some revisions, and then we'll-
It only goes up-
The acre, the acres of the incremental, the sliding scale will-
Yeah, ten acres is, you're right, you're right.
Do we, uh, just for my clarification, I just scanned through, um, I read the, I think the first page, but I missed, gosh, what was I gonna say? The
I'm sorry. The distance. What distance we have currently proposed from the property line?
So this says twenty-five from any lot line and fifty from any building except for the principal building that it's kept on.
Okay.
What do-
Yeah, that was, that was good. But it's gotta be in the rear yard as well.
In the rear. So, but does that, so then what does the coop have to be from the principal building, that twenty-five feet?
Uh, so the coop from the principal building, I mean, the coop-
Does that go back to the standards of-
Can be however close to the principal building that it's located on, but it would probably, it would probably end up, yeah, referring, you're deferring to the accessory structure.
Then I would just, can we just automatically put ten in there?
Put ten in there, just to be consistent?
Ten feet is what a normal shed has to be away from a house.
From the principal building that-
I was gonna suggest that, yeah, thirty feet, fifty feet from a house, somebody's gotta go outside and take care of them, that's a long way.
Right.
So I, I like the ten better.
So just put the ten in?
Is everybody okay with ten feet from their-
From their own house?
Their own house, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if they, they got an issue with it, that's on them for having the chickens.
Well, exactly. You want chickens, and you can deal with the smell and whatever. And that's just, that's just minimum. You can, you can have it farther away. You could have fifty feet away. We don't care. We just want to know the minimum, yeah.
Okay, we got, uh, motion, probably is a good idea. Motion to, uh, put this on the agenda for the next planning commission meeting.
Republic hearing, yes.
One more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, to Mr. Smith, as far as the smell goes, and the cleaning of their coops or non-cleaning of their coop, is there something we can put in there for code enforcement if neighbors call and say, look, I don't mind my neighbors having chickens, but they don't clean it. And it's disgusting. Is there a mechanism than code enforcement-wise that we can give them a ticket and tell them, hey, clean your stuff, just like we say, mow your grass?
Pick up your dog poop.
I mean-
I'm just asking a question.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm just playing devil's advocate with you. We don't regulate picking up dog poop.
I think this is different than dogs.
I agree, but having it-
So your answer's no?
I would say, please, for the love of God, no. Because that's gonna create a whole nother litany of issues for my code enforcement guys.
Mike wants to talk.
Mr. Expert?
Absolutely, yes. Mike Gatto, senior. I'm a farmer, retired farmer. Um, so suppose I have a half-acre lot with my house on it, and my neighbor has a two-acre property, and he has X number of chickens, and he's not taking proper care of them, and I want to sell my house. And the odor, the whatever is happening is not under control. How, how can I appeal to the code enforcement to have them correct the situation? I believe that a permit system that has to be every year, every other year addressed, we only have, what, five or ten percent of the households that might qualify for two acres. Um, it's gonna be minimal, and I think that having some type of, uh, education or fee for having a permit that allows the neighbors to weigh in on the situation would alleviate uh, any potential problems that the code enforcement might have in addressing smells and other things that are kind of uh, subjective and not objective criteria.
Is there anything in our ordinance that says you have to keep your place, your yard in sanitary condition?
We have the blight ordinance, we have the property maintenance code, but again, this, while I understand where you're coming from, where does it stop? We're, we're gonna have to, you know, you know, your neighbor's got three dogs, and I don't like barking dogs, and yes, we do have a noise ordinance, and the police can go after it, but Mike, I, it's, it, you're going down a slippery slope that we gotta be careful about.
The, the whole chicken thing is a slippery slope.
I agree, but-
But I think that we're, you know, the issue is not what we allow a homeowner to do, but what do we subject the neighbors to? And I think that's what we have to pay close attention to, is how do, how does this affect the neighbors, the saleability of their property, their standard of living, their ability to dine outdoors, barbecue outdoors. Those are the things that we have to be careful of. It's not whether or not we let somebody have a few chickens to lay a few eggs. And I'm in favor of two acres and, and a certain X number of chickens and more per acre or whatever, but I believe that we really have to put in some protection, uh, that, that the neighbors have some say, just like we have to send out notifications, three hundred, six hundred feet, whatever, for zoning and, and site plans and other things. I think we need to have some sort of a protection for the neighbors to these people that may choose to have chickens. So take that as what you will. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely. All right. Mr. Bush?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Mr. Yacho, and I kind of agree with the permit thing. However, permit to me signals a payment and a fee. Um, one thing that I read when I was reading this ordinance is, Jeremy prepared, that we have to go through the zoning ordinances, specifically the section where it says keeping of animals. That section pertains to pets. So if we're gonna, now, we're gonna put these chickens in a category in our zoning ordinance that's for pets. It, it says keeping it, uh, I'm not gonna debate what, what that, what that section says. It says keeping of animals. And that specifically dogs, cats, pets. Um, we don't ask our township residents for a fee for our dogs, our birds, our cats.
I gotta pay a dog.
We, the county, we pay for a license fee, we don't pay Grand Lake Township.
Just saying, I gotta pay for my dog.
So, we're gonna ask somebody with four chickens that are pets to pay Grand Lake Township money, but not for their dogs. I, I have that, I, I think that's a big slippery slope. And I agree with Mr. Yacho. The whole thing's a slippery slope.
Anyway, yeah, I, I agree that we should not have the permit. Let's start this way and see what happens.
And again, if this gets out of hand, and it becomes a problem, and we want to ha- add permits to it, I'm all for it, but at this point, I don't think we're there yet. Again, the amount of people that, people that are gonna potentially qualify for this is gonna be in the whole township, probably two hundred parcels. And then those people have to, there might be more than that. I'd have to run the numbers. Uh, but I, it's we're trying to regulate things that, better than what we're doing today, and I think we're in the right step. And I think if, we can always amend it down the road. Um, that's just my personal opinion.
So motion to have a public hearing at the next available-
Yes.
Meeting. Motion-
So, miss-
Motion by Mr. Johnson, support by-
I mean, do you have enough time to notice? It comes up soon. Is it August seventh?
Say next available.
Fourteenth.
August fourteenth.
Yeah, we switched it.
Okay, so we have enough time.
Yep.
Next available. Was there support for that motion? Have a public hearing at the next meeting?
Support.
Support by Mr. Bush. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. We got one more to go, right?
Texas.
Yeah.
Guys, I got, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I have to leave, I have to get my kids.
We tried to make it way too, and just couldn't do it.
Tried to make it, tried to make it.
He wanted to stay for the chicken talk.
I, I had to get through the chicken talk. You still got a quorum.
Well, it's no decisions, discussion anyway, so yeah.
It's just committee reports.
Yeah, it's just, it's just discussion, so you don't have to, we're not making any decisions.
Okay, perfect, excellent.
Yeah, we still got three hours.
Oh, we're gonna make a decision, all right.
All right.
All right, so last, lastly, uh, we just talked, brought up a memo about just, uh, moratoriums. Um, so, um, Jeremy and I had been in discussion that, um, you know, moratoriums, uh, you know, are, I guess, an item that, you know, the township's looking to think about for a few land uses. Um, I do think, so we, we provided some, just some ideas here about the key points for when you want to enact a moratorium or not. So, um, I do think that there's, you know, this is a sensitive subject because I'm not, you know, I'm not the township, I'm a consultant that's kind of looking at this from a hundred mile away, you know, zoomed-out level. Um, so I mean, I'm not here to tell the township what they should or should not enact in terms of moratoriums. That's for the decision-makers. But I do believe that when you are enacting a moratorium, or when the Township Board is, there should be some, really some, some pretty strict findings here, and I, we, we provide a list here about that. Um, you know, you should consider if there's an imminent health, safety, general welfare threat, uh, by allowing a new use of this kind to enter the township. You should look at imminent industry trends or technological changes that might open the door for some of these health, safety, general wel- welfare threats. You know, you should look at the uniqueness of the land use, you know, what's different about this land use that you want to enact a moratorium on? Uh, you know, than perhaps other land uses that are similar in size or scale or nature. Um, and you want to make sure that you're, you know, the ultimate goal should not be to prohibit a use altogether and just, you know, kind of, uh, you know, dance around, you know, the issues with the use. It's to study the use and craft an appropriate ordinance for the use. I guess this is kind of a unique memo that maybe you're not used to, but we wanted to just bring it up.
Where's it coming from, Mike?
Thank you.
Okay, so let me, let me piggyback off of what Andy's been talking about. There was, um, some uses that a couple of the board members wanted us to explore. Uh, specifically was car dealerships, and certain, I won't go into the exact detail of what it was, but it was a retail, basically, it was a retail that would be allowed in any of our commercial zoning. Uh, it was a use that there's a, we have an abundance of, but again, it's, basically what this is saying is, we need to be careful what we put moratoriums on, because that's gonna be a very slippery slope. Where do you draw the line? So-
But we don't put the moratoriums on.
I understand that, but we, we-
It's like I'm telling my, my mom and dad what to do.
Right.
Well, but the, the, it wasn't, I guess, moratorium, maybe not the right word, it was, they were asked to more importantly, strike that from our ordinance, that that use is completely gone, and we can't use that use at all, period, the end, anywhere. So I guess it's, while we would say moratorium is, would become from the Township Board level, there was talk of removing the use completely from the ordinance book. So that's why it's in front of you guys today, and I just want to make sure that you guys are my argument with the car dealerships is, yes, we do have an abundance of car dealerships. My devil's advocate question-
Banks too, but-
Well, we got pizza places, we've got gas stations, banks, you name it, we've got, we've got an abundance of a lot of things. But my argument specifically to the car dealership is, we have almost everything here. I don't think we're gonna see too many car dealerships, but we are a growing community. We do, we are on the south end of town, we butt up to Oakland County. What happens if Porsche, Lamborghini, Ferrari, we have Ford just down the road on Hill Road, you got LaFontaine, so really, do we really-
That's in money, don't you-
I understand that, but to my point is, if it's a new car dealership, regardless of what brand it is, do we really want to stop it? I mean, that's development. I understand that. Do we want multiples of everything? No, but I don't think anybody's gonna, I don't think GM or Ford or Chrysler's gonna allow multiple dealerships within so many miles, so I, I highly doubt that's gonna happen. My, my bigger argument is if, what if a luxury brand wants to come in, and we'd say, no more car, new car dealerships? You don't want a ten million dollar Lamborghini dealership in Grand Lake Township, or Porsche, or, you name it, we don't want it? I guess that's my point, is we have to be very careful on what we're, we've been tasked, I've been tasked to bring this in front of you guys tonight, to look at these issues. Um, another, the retail one, um, I don't think we ever should limit retail, um, specifically anything that could go into a strip mall. So that's just my two cents, so.
One question.
Go ahead.
Whether it's for you, Mr. Smith, or you, Ms. Hugo, because you sit on the Township Board. I read the memo, and I was confused, as Dan was, why are we seeing this memo? The Township Board has the ability to put a moratorium in, in this township. Township Board has the ability to enact an ordinance change. So what's coming down the road that you want us to know about? Because it doesn't make, this doesn't even make sense that we're seeing this.
It was part of strategic plan items that the Township Board has, has looked at, and that they have, they had a list of things that they wanted, uh, us as department heads and the board members of all the other boards to take a look at. Part of that was looking at limiting or excluding any more new car dealerships. The other one was limiting a certain commercial business use from the book, period, the end.
Okay, is that a discussion then that we, we as planning commissioners should have then? And if that is correct, then what use are you proposing they want to get rid of?
Car dealerships.
And what's, what's the retail use? I mean, we're the ones gonna have to deal with it. What is it?
Is it like, sorry?
Liquor stores.
Yes.
Liquor stores.
I thought you were gonna say gummies and CBD.
Oh, they already took care of that.
Yeah, we don't, I don't, we don't allow dispensaries, but-
We do in the medical, right?
Not medical dispensaries, no.
I thought we did in the medical hospital.
I'd take that.
We do.
Ooh, wait a second. I'd have to double-check that one. Don't quote me on that one, I don't know that one.
I don't either, I just, I thought we did.
And I do think it's one of the reasons we're just kind, uh, to my knowledge, again, I'm kind of from a zoomed-out level, I don't know all the inner workings of the township. Um, but one of the thoughts I had was really about that last point, the, the last two points of those key considerations. If the Township Board enacts a moratorium, you all should be ready on- If the township board enacts a moratorium, you all should be ready on putting our heads down and going to work about, okay, what are the key issues with, with the land use? Are there buffer requirements you need to put in to space these land uses apart? Are there, you know, you did that kind of with the gas stations in a way.
Exactly what we did with the gas stations.
So I mean, it's just kind of giving you a heads up about what could be coming down the line and, and, and why we, you can't just, the commission can't craft an ordinance that prohibits a land use altogether. That's actually illegal by the state law. If, if that use is demonstrated to have a, a need in the community, which I think for the use is considered, there's definitely a, something to be said about an economic need and a service need for these land uses in the community. I guess part of this was kind of giving you the heads up that if the township board does enact a moratorium, then you should be ready to make upcoming land use decisions on.
We're responsible for CYA. You start the process with the amendment and then they, you recommend, like we did today, we make the changes, recommend to the township board, they make final decisions, so.
So, yeah, if mom and dad come back and then also look at something specific, then correct.
And certain specifics, let's say, we do a moratorium on liquor stores, say. So we're telling Bee Gees, Myers, all these retail establishments that want to come into our township, nope, because you can't have liquor.
No.
Um, they're not going to come here.
The liquor stores are specific to just liquor use only, not, not a, having liquor sales within a grocery store, no.
So we can regulate mom and pop stores, but we can't regulate big box stores?
Well, the big box store, the primary use would be grocery, not liquor. That's where the argument is.
Accessory use?
Yes.
I think that's a slope.
But that's, that's what we're saying, we don't want to do that. That's why this memo says what we're, is saying.
I guess, I guess the, one of the points of the memo was just be careful with moratoriums because there's a lot of.
I know, but he's just saying, you're going to catch the trickle down if the township board.
You're getting some heat, we understand that. When the time comes, we'll take a look at it.
Absolutely.
All right. Next item on the agenda, committee reports, I believe. Township board?
Next meeting is Tuesday.
So nothing?
Nothing?
Nothing for site plan, other than what we saw tonight?
Nope.
You have anything else, Mr.?
Um.
EZA?
EZA, we did, this past Tuesday, we approved the pool setback, and then we conditionally approved, uh, they conditionally approved. There's a BP on Holly Road in 75 that has a pole sign. They did work without permission, um, and they were conditionally approved because you will see in the next month or so, uh, language that talks about pole signage being allowed on parcels at about 75 and 475.
Any other business?
None.
Not a motion to adjourn, 8:36 we have?
Support.
We had a motion by Ms. Nasr and support by Ms. Hugo, was it?
And if we're going to get nitpicky in the minutes, it says Mr. Hugo.
Why having a name like Alexander where everyone thinks you're an Alexander?
So they're like, Alex.
We need to vote on whether we're adjourning or not.
Sorry.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, you can stay here.